Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call the Orangeburg County Council Meeting of June 4th, 2018, to order.
Father God, we come again calling your holy righteous name. As we look throughout this season, fathers, we come to involve in trying to make some decisions for the betterment of people that we serve in this county and this state. I pray that you be in the midst of Christ's name, we pray.
Thank you so much for having me. I hope each and every one of you have also had the opportunity to review the minutes of the May 21st meeting. And if you have any changes, please note it. If not, I would entertain a motion and second that those minutes be received as written, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive the minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Willie B. Orange, second by Mr. Daniel Ravenel, that minutes be received as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it in the motions cap. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight. And as you notice on your agenda, we have public comments of, in two areas. We have public comments of agenda items, and we also have public comments of other matters. If the agenda item pertains to a public hearing, we'll wait until you get to that particular item on the agenda before you comment. Other than that, any items on the agenda, if you have any questions or concern, you may approach the podium, state your name, and the item number, and what you would like to ask or comment on. The second one is public comments of other matters. That means that anything on, you want to bring to council at that time, you may be able to bring up to council. And we will listen to what you have to say. Having said that, the floor is now open to public comments of agenda items. Hearing none, we close that portion of it and open it for public comments of other matters.
Good afternoon. My name's Rick Leonard. I'm a resident of Orangeburg. And as far as occupation, I'm the principal property or credit center. But what I want to talk about is what I read in the newspaper last week, and I'm concerned about the proposed location of a much-needed library. As a resident of Orangeburg County, I think a library is very, very important, not just for the media and the bookstore houses, but also to showcase for the community. And the proposed site, which I call the Piggly Wiggly Site, which is down in a hole off of Russell Street, I just don't think it's too congested of an area. Of course, you've got to recall the traffic lights and things like that. I'm also concerned about, you know, his proximity to Stockton Our State University. The state's got its own library on campus, I think detracting from that. I'm also concerned, of course, about the area. I know a lot of elderly people and people with families are concerned about maybe going down there at evening hours, or even anytime. I know the Crest building didn't make sense, has an old dilapidated building, and there's no parking. But I think one proposal was the area I call Cross from the DPU, that part of Russell Street. That part of the city needs some boost. I think also, as far as the county, being that location, it's easier access from both the east, west parts of the county and the south, coming up on 601. The other thing I'm concerned about is, I hope we don't build the library, I call on the cheap end. I think this is a structure, usually most buildings, lifespan is 50 years. And I think we need to take that consideration. Whatever we, y'all decide is going to last 50 years. I'm concerned about the proposed location down, what I thought the old Piggly Wiggly Site. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We appreciate your comment. Any other comments of other matters? Hearing none, we will close the comment portion of our agenda, and we're going to our regular agenda. And first item on the regular agenda is an update from South Carolina Alliance, and I'll yield to Mr. Mike Byrne.
Mr. Chairman, just thanks to members of council, it's an honor to be here with you again, and to talk a little bit about what's been going on over the past year with respect to the Central SC region, as well as our relationship with Orangeburg County. So, I do have a slide presentation. You will remember that the Central SC Alliance is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit public partnership, a private partnership, we've been around since 1994. And together, everybody that's been a member of this partnership over these years has worked with companies that have committed and invested $13.3 billion to create right at 70,000 jobs. Remains today a partnership of eight counties in the center part of the state, see the footprint of the region. Part of the magic we have here is the intersection of all these highways. It allows us to move people and goods very expeditiously. As we go around the world to sell this region, one of the things you can say about it with great certainty is, you can still go 30 miles in 30 minutes where we live. You can't do that in many places, even in South Carolina today, you can't do it. But we still can, and that's magic for us going forward. We do four basic things. Project management for the counties requests that we do it, helping as we can in that regard. But marketing, research, and consulting, helping solve problems, helping do planning, helping do anything that we can to move forward in the area of economic development. Take a look at Orangeburg County's economic overview from 2012 to 2017. If you look at what's going on in labor force and unemployment, it's very impressive. As of April 2018, the labor force was right at 35,000 people, and the unemployment rate was 4.5%. This is a little timeline of Orangeburg County's economic, economic development successes, going back to 2004, when our partnership started, and ending in 2018 with Ecomalita. There are many other projects that were worked, but we just picked these to highlight. You'll remember them, remember the announcements, and you remember the ones that came here and that just continue to invest. And the reason they do that is because it's a great place to do business, and they can be successful. We need to continue to develop the Orangeburg Power Site, we need to continue to push that forward, and we need to continue to work to fulfill all of these sites that we have in Orangeburg County that define this county going forward, and differentiate this county from many other places in the state. Today, we have 24 active projects looking at Orangeburg County. If we were to land them all, it's about $1.8 billion and 6,500 jobs. Now, we probably won't land all of them, but the fact of the matter is, we'll get some. 24 of those active projects are all new projects to the county, not expansions. And you can see the, kind of the icons to the right, the industries that are involved, the latest being a company called Volago. That's an interesting company. We first met with Volago in Florence, Italy, in 2016. If I could only take one slide around the world to sell this area, it would be this one. If you look at those names on there, as we take these around the world, and folks see those, these kinds of companies that have made the decision to locate here and continue to do business here, and continue to expand here, they understand this must be a great place to do business. The two things we need to concentrate on, there's no mystery what they are, it's product and it's workforce. Product is a threshold issue, and workforce is quickly becoming a threshold issue. Folks are beginning now the site search with questions about, I need these many, this many people, and here are the qualifications I need, and do you have this? What does your workforce supply look like? Any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Mr. Mike? We certainly appreciate your presentation, and we appreciate all you do with the partnership, working with us to help us recruit those industries. And I certainly hope that your vision on the bullshit will last for a minute, so that we can have a different look in our county in the next five years from now.
Absolutely.
That's something that I always feel positive about, and I want to. Any question for Mr. Michael, any comments for anyone? Thank you, Mr. Trace, for coming down. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Second item on the agenda is an audit, and third reading, and this is an audit of the County Council of Orangeburg County, amending the zoning map of the already incorporated Orangeburg County to change the zoning designation for the real property described as tax map number 0154-17-01-011, from residential general district to rural community district, and providing for cerebility at effective date. Mr. Administrator, for those persons who may not have been at the last couple of readings, just give them a quick summary of what this is all about.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a request made by Marion Edmond Jr. to the owner property at 114 O'Meades Drive to Dover. This is in Council District 3, from Residential General to Residential Community. They wanted to do this to allow single-wide mobile home property. There was no opposition to the request. A petition from several neighbors was also submitted in support of the request, and the planning commission voted unanimously to approve this.
Thanks, sir. Council District 3 members, you have any comments, or you have any?
I move for third reading, Chairman.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Harry Remley, the district representative, for third reading, and second by Mr. Willie B. Orange. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it in the motions cap. Thank you so much. Item number three is third reading also, and this is same situation, except this is tax map number 0246-14-03-001, from Forest Agriculture District to Commercial Jones District.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a request made by Alron Patel. This is the owner property at 6204 Chalkston Highway, Bowman's, South Carolina. This is in District 2. They wanted to change from FA to CG. This property has been a convenience store, as you well know, this is the first store as you come into Bowman's. The current owner wishes to open a zoning map in conjunction with the convenience store, which required a zoning change. There was no opposition, and the planning commission voted unanimously to approve this approval.
Mr. Ravenel, any questions, concerned about that?
No, it's a move for third reading, Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, Council District, second by Mr. Willie B. Orange, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Harry Remley, sorry, Will. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it in the motions cap. Item number four is also a third reading, and this is a change of zoning designation also, and this is tax map number 0152-17-07-019, and this is from Residential General District to Rural Community District. I think this is District 6.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a request is from Helen Fraser, the owner property at 219 Strowman Street, Council District 6, from RG to RC. This is to add a single-wide mobile home, there was no opposition, and the planning commission also voted unanimously for approval for this project.
Any question from Council District? If not, can I get a motion and second that we approve that?
I believe that we accept this ordinance on third reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vellus, District 6, and second by Ms. Cooper Smith, that we accept this third reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it in the motions cap. Item number five and number six is same project. It's the first one is a second reading on the audit, and for the project, and item six is second reading on the industrial, joint industrial park. So this is an audit authorizing execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Orangeburg County and the project Paris, providing for a payment of special source revenue credit and other matters related thereto. And item six is an audit authorizing an amendment to the amended and reinstated agreement for development of a joint county industrial park dated May 17, 2010, so as to include additional properties in our project Paris also, and as part of the joint industrial park and other matters related thereto. I think it's pretty well self-explanatory of that, but Mr. Administrator, any attorney need anything else to add to?
I yield to the attorney, Mr. Care.
This project has been discussed in executive session after getting the usual advice and consent that the county gets from the Development Commission. It is a $10 million project, minimum of 15 new jobs, and the county would provide a 30% special source revenue credit for 10 years. Would also be likely to locate it in a multi-county park.
Okay, we've heard the explanation from the attorney on item five and six for second reading. Any question for them, council members?
Mr. Chairman, I move for second reading.
Five and six.
Five and six.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Willie B., and second by Ms. Cooper Smith, for five and six, second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it in the motions cap. Item number seven is the second reading, and this is the audit of the general fund budget for appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, for the Orangeburg County budget for ordinary county purposes for which the county may levy a tax to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal real estate properties and sufficient tax to pay for the principal interest on outstanding indebtedness of the Orangeburg County mature during the fiscal year, to provide for matters relating to Orangeburg County, and to provide for the expenditure of taxes and other revenues coming to the county during the fiscal year. We're going to do that, and then we do the educational one.
Harold, I got a question in the proviso. We were talking about one division of it, a possibility of raising one mill.
Yes, sir.
But it doesn't reflect that in the proviso. That needs to be changed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We need to make that change.
Do we need more change? Is that what we need to do?
Yeah, I think we need to change it. Definitely so.
In the proviso, I move that we amend the proviso for the Orangeburg County Fire District, and change the millage from 17 to 18 mills.
Second.
It has been moved in second, that we look at the proviso in the, in the Fire District from 17 to 18. Moved by Mr. Orange, I mean, by Mr. Remley, and second by Mr. Orange. So all in favor of that, please let, you know, by saying aye.
Harold. Harold. I may have made some remarks on that prior to carrying this motion. I think we need to let the public know that there was a concerted effort when we started working with the budget, to do the best we can for Orangeburg County. We really need to raise more taxes, but we have not raised taxes, and I hope it doesn't bite us in the future. But the deliberation was very stiff, and I think we can live with what we have discussed and what we will be passing. And you need to know that when you start comparing Orangeburg County and other areas, that we're not where we should be, but I hope we're getting there.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, one other, maybe you're already in there, but one other, on the outside agents, we provided some funding for OCAP for, to be used as, for wintering, for fuel stabilization.
Yes, sir.
I will make sure that that stays, that it's to be used only in Orangeburg County.
Correct.
Let me say something about OCAP, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I?
If I may.
Yes, sir. Now, y'all can turn this into the?
I think here, now's the time to be open with the general public. And I think OCAP has done an excellent job with programs throughout the county, and also other areas of their community, Ironburg, Vanburg, and Allenby County.
And I must give credit where credit is due. Too often, we don't give people credit for what they do. I must give the director of OCAP credit for his hard work and for running the tight ship. That's the best I can say for him.
Spoke earlier about the raising of one mill, but this is specific just for the fire side of it. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, the public need to know as well, too, that's not the mills for the tight county budget, correct?
Correct. Justified.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, part of the process in order to present you a balanced budget, except for the possible change in the fire section, we have to keep in mind that the county has sustained several cuts from the state and the local government fund. It's still not fully funded. And also, we just received notice that we will get declining revenues back from, from the other state agencies, one of which would be the Department of Social Services. Also, we talked in conjunction with that, so the local government fund from the state is still being, it's on track to give us what we had last year, but there is some change within the state's budget that will reflect and come back to be something that we would have to deal with in the future in October, when we actually set the mills. So at the same time, we did, as you told us, within this climate, to present you a balanced budget, except for the fact that we have to frame ourselves to be able to take into account any cuts coming from the state for different services or reimbursements. Therefore, we're on the safe side from the standpoint of what we're doing to add mill to fire services.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to go back to Councilman Remley and Ravenel saying about that one mill from 17 to 18. This still does not reflect an increase in the millage countywide.
No.
Okay.
Just, just.
I want the public to know that, there's no increase in millage.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of passing the second reading on the man budget, maybe known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Item eight is an audit, second reading, this is an audit of special education budget to provide for appropriation for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, for the Orangeburg County Calhoun College and the Orangeburg County Disability and Special Need Board, the vocational rehabilitation, and for the other public in special education to provide for the levy of taxes and other revenues to the county during the fiscal year for that purpose. Could I get a motion and second?
Second.
Sir.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Mr. Ravenel, that we pass the special education budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it in the motions cap. Item nine is an audit for a treaty, and this is an audit authorizing and amendment to those certain agreements for development of a joint county industrial park for the establishment of an economic development fund used for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Administrator, just for, just give a quick summary of that, you know, for the public for?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to the current fee and new structure with the joint multi-county industrial park, so that we may be able to capture a portion of that fee to go back into infrastructure improvements for economic development, as well as repayment for other infrastructure upgrades that county may have done to bring industry here. This is a way for us to establish a footprint. As we heard Mr. Briggs say tonight, the future for our community and for our area stems in us having product for economic development. This is a way that we can assure that we have the ability to provide product, so that we can stay competitive in the markets for economic development for now and into the future.
Any questions from council? If not, can I get a motion and second that we pass this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Livingstone, and second by Mr. Harry Remley, that we pass for a treaty on this audit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 10 and 11 is the same project, Olive, both of those, one is for the orders on the taxes, fee and new, and the other one is for the joint county industrial park. An audit authorizing pursuant to Chapter 12, Title 12, Chapter 44, Court of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of an ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Orangeburg County and a certain company as sponsors and sponsor affiliate respectively identified collectively for the time being as Project Olive, to provide for a fee in lieu of an ad valorem tax incentive and certain special revenue, certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. Item 11 is related to same one, but this is an audit authorizing amendment to the amended and reinstated agreement for development of a joint industrial park dated May 17, 2010, as to include additional properties in Orangeburg County for Project Olive as part of that joint industrial park and other matters related thereto. Man returning, or whoever, do you want to give a brief one that is?
This is a solar facility, a solar farm, and the estimated capital investment is $28 million. As with most solar farms, the new full-time jobs, it's none. There's going to be a fee in lieu at 6%, which is normal, with a millage rate of 402.8 for 30 years, and a special source revenue credit for 30 years at $60,000 annually.
Hearing none, could I get a motion and second for item 10 and 11, please?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, second by Mr. Heather Livingston, for passes of first reading for item 10 and 11 on Project Olive. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it in the motions cap. Thank you. Item 12 is for Kielman, FY 18-0515, Indian Bluff Shoreline Stabilization Project. Mr. Administrator, for the public, would you give us a summary on what this is all about?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a request proposal for FY 18-0515. This was prepared for the Indian Bluff Shoreline stabilization. This was a section of Indian Bluff shore that got washed away during the last storm. Shoreline at Indian Bluff has been redesigned and work led through the Army Corps Engineers, as well as the entities that approved those shoreline renovations. There's 1,250 feet of linear field shoreline that has to be worked on, and this proposal was advertised in SKEBO and the TND. There was total of four contractors submitted, and it was with our recommendation to recommend a low bid to port contracting out St. Matthew's, South Carolina, in an amount of $233,800.
Thank you so much. Council, any question? I see there's a wide range of, we had four people, and that's, we do have some local, good thing that the local contractor got it. And I see the deviation in the prices, so it's a big deal. Could I get a motion and second for passes of that, unless someone have a question?
Phone's come from FEMA with a 25% match.
Yes, sir. This is part of our reimbursement for the storm damage through hurricane, which we have already prepared the docks and everything to get that done, and want to commend council because with your fast movement, we were able to, and had committed to having Indian Bluff back open prior to efficiencies and the swimming season, so that has been accomplished. So this is the last step of that revitalization.
Mr. Administrator. Yes, sir. Well, I know that in the past, we said if a company, I know this is too out of range.
Yes, sir.
But if they were to award contract to Orangeburg personally, it goes from one to the next. Any proximity? What is that percentage? Do you remember?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's in the 10, 10, 15% range.
10, 15%?
Yeah. They were given local preference, and the range is just too wide.
Oh, I'm saying that's one of the complications.
But yeah, county council has implemented a local preference, so that when we have these bids, we try as best as we can to give the local business the opportunity to do this, but however, being steward of cash for this money, we can't overlook certain savings just to give it to Orangeburg County then. In this particular case, the low bid was from the next Orangeburg County bid, over some $200,000 difference.
Motion second that we pass. All in favor?
Aye.
Beg pardon?
No, I need a motion and a second.
I so move.
I second.
Moved by Mr. Willie B. Orange, and second by Ms. Vellus, that we pass this stabilization project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Item 13 is a recommendation from the Tax and Tourism Committee, and I'm pretty sure it's pretty well self-explanatory, unless you want to add something to that, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. The Tax and Tourism Committee met on May 29, 2018. The following recommendations were made by the Tax and Tourism Advisory Committee to Orangeburg County. The first one was the Grand American Coon Nut, in an amount of $10,400. The next one was the requested funds to lease billboards for Orangeburg County for the advertisement of Y and T Aquatic Centers and other ballparks throughout the season, $11,922.
eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Orangeburg County Chamber of Commerce for promotion and outdoor activities for Blackwater, Edisto River, and other recommendation calendar, book lists in the amount of three thousand seven hundred dollars. The Town of North in the amount of two thousand dollars for the Fourth of July celebration with the fireworks celebration. The County Community of Character, two thousand dollars, International Character Jamboree event, Eldery Heritage Museum in the amount of two thousand dollars, Optimum Mobile County Tourism and advertising and marketing of the center. Door requested amounts for the upcoming downtown events such as farmers' markets, Patriots, block party, and kids parade, Garden City Music Festival, and Taste of Orangeberry in amount of three thousand dollars, and the Orangeburg County Military Museum at Plainfield for three different projects for construction of handicap parking area, website for the museum and handrails in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars. Total funds recommended to the committee for approval was thirty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Total funds available were forty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Do I have any questions for the Administrator on the?
Mr. Administrator, I know what's written, as soon as written, but all of the requests was fully funded. Yes, sir. About far from ours.
The motion in second that we approve the commission's recommendation.
Pro move for the general.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Livestock and second by Mr. Owens, that we approve the recommendation by the board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item fourteen is an appointment of board commission committees, appointment to the library board, I yield to Mr. Vellis.
Yes. I would like to appoint Tara Williamson to the library board. She has served in the past, and this is a reappointment.
Could I get a second on that?
A second.
Moved by Mr. Vellis, second by Mr. Harry Remley, that she appoints Tara Williamson to the library board, District Six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item fifteen is an update from the Public Works Committee, and I yield to its chairperson, Mr. Jerry Ratt.
We had some, we had some discussion on, I think, a second item on the general for the Public Works Committee. First on the general was committee seek to approve abandonment of maintenance on because of the travel and makeup of it. We abandoned maintenance on that, and that is the formal, the representative council.
It's a move by the chairperson, Ravenel, and second by committee member, Mr. Livingston, that we abandon maintenance on jog road. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it, and motions carried.
Next on our general, we had abandonment maintenance on Park of Vanier Street. It's part of it that was, it was a travel number then by the owners of the property on the property both side of it, and recommendation right there is abandonment maintenance on that portion of it as well.
You get a second?
Second.
Moved by chairperson, Mr. Ravenel, that committee recommended abandonment maintenance on Vanier Street portion of it, second by Mr. Cooper Smith.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it.
Another one is abandonment maintenance, rest on part of Pasadena Avenue on that one as well, part that doesn't affect the gray side of a church remaining open, but the balance of it is the landowners own property on both side, no mail carriers, no houses. It's just a through road and a portion of Pasadena Road with request for abandonment as well. That's the formal motion.
Second. Moved by Mr. Ravenel again, and second by Mr. Livingston, and then with the committee, they recommend abandonment maintenance on portion of Pasadena Avenue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The ayes have it.
Talking about the end gun part of it, obstruction of county maintained road pursuant to South Carolina Code nineteen seventy-six, that's five seven dash seven dash two forty. Person shall obstruct unnecessarily any road. No person should obstruct unnecessarily any road maintained by the county for a long period, no longer than five minutes, to the hurricane or inconvenience of travelers or any person passing along upon such road. The placing of an end gun or irrigation system such that is shoots water across county maintained road shall be deemed by obstruction on county maintained road. In such a case, anyone or more of the following person shall be responsible for the offense and for damage to the road, the person upon whose land the irrigation system is located, and any person who is benefiting from the use of the irrigation system, such as the person who is irrigating across.
But there was no stipulated penalty related to that?
It says the twenty-five, twenty-five dollar fee.
Twenty-five dollar fee.
Stay, don't stay out of that mistake.
Okay. Okay, that's a state policy. That's not the kind of policy we develop.
This, this is due to the state policy.
Question, is this an ordinance?
No.
It's not, it's not.
Okay, go ahead.
The draft that was discussed is written in the form of an ordinance?
Is it an ordinance, Madam Attorney?
Not if you just pass a-
Okay, thank you.
It'd be a policy.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? You get that push, the policy that he just discussing, the motion, in form of a motion, and did I get a second on it? Moved by Mr. Ravenel, the chairperson of the committee, and second by Mr. Cooper Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item six.
Item six, we had discussed about Warrior Drive, the water line, Warrior Drive is affecting the road, and our Public Works Department see if there's going to be a problem with it, and we just have a use of discretionary merits on it as well. By the way, I'm supposed to do a follow-up personally myself with that one. I don't think we need a motion on that.
No, that is just for the-
The discussion. That's the end of the Public Works Committee report.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from any council members before we ask for a motion for adjournment? Hearing none, could I get a motion in second that we adjourn?
I say no. Second.
Moved by Mr. Vellis, second by Mr. Cooper Smith, that we adjourn, and thank you all for attending our meeting tonight and all your inputs.